I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Whittier Vocational Tech High School on Wednesday, April 13th, 2016. First, our is we'll have salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic from which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like liberty and justice.
First, our of business is public comment. Anybody have a public comment to approach the school committee? Okay. Next, our of business is approval of the minutes of March 9th, 2016. Yes, Mr. Tucker?
I move the approval of the minutes of March 9th, regular meeting.
Second.
No, 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 that's the budget workshop.
Budget workshop.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, deletions, or omissions? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
No abstention, two abstentions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on March 9th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, omissions, and deletions? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Two abstentions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Tucker.
I move the approval of this month treasurer's report.
Second.
Are there any comments on the treasurer's report as stated? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Now, going to old business. First, our of old business is school committee self-evaluation. I now have received 10. I thank everybody for sending them in on time. And I'll get those things tabulated, and we'll have a full report at the next May meeting. Secondly, as we do every year after we reorganize, we look at the Sunshine Fund, which we use for various events. And so, at this time, I would like to ask everybody if they could, excuse me, between now and the next meeting, to bring in at least about $20 per individual to give the Sunshine Fund back up to its required amount.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could you give it to Lisa?
Yeah, you can give it to Lisa. Thank you. Reports and communications, student representative, Ms. Fox.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all other school committee members. The basketball, baseball team has excitedly waited for the weather to clear so that they can begin their season. So far, they've been practicing indoors and outdoors. They look to have another promising season as a quality core of returning players are set to take the field. While young, they're looking to their returning seniors for guidance and leadership as they look to another CAC title and state tournament berth. The team opened their season this afternoon versing Greater Lawrence. The softball team is also waiting anxiously to get on the field this spring. They're practicing indoors and outdoors as well and have been scrimmaging a variety of schools in preparation of today's opening game versing Greater Lowell. With several returning starters, they look to make a run at the CAC title. Also, they hope to make a deep run in the state tournament as they did last season. The track and field team has been off to a fast start, putting lots of effort into conditioning training to build up strength for a competitive season. Expectations are high for the team this year with many returning seniors and promising underclassmen. The lacrosse team is hoping to have a promising season and continue to build upon their successes from previous years. This season, the team moved up to the CAC large division due to winning four straight CAC small division titles. With great senior leadership and the continued dedication from each player to get better, the team looks to progress each day and hopes to be playing their best lacrosse by the end of the season. The chess club continues to meet regularly and improve their skills and continue to enjoy the game. They're also looking for new members. The yearbook club has finished the yearbook of how to schedule this year and has just sent the final yearbook submission to press last week. With the effort of many people, the club has achieved an almost 15% reduction in yearbook costs from last year. The yearbook staff of senior and junior students has worked very hard this year to create a high-quality and well-composed yearbook. The drama club is resting up after the performance of Grease. They had an excellent attendance this year due to the popularity of the show and the large cast. They'll be meeting to discuss plans for next year's events. The multicultural club met to learn about the deaf and hard-of-hearing community to allow members to have a better understanding. Also, they got the opportunity to learn some basic sign language skills and to sign their name and practice a few words. In addition, the club was also introduced to Japanese culture and language. The robotics team wrapped up a successful season, placing 16th out of 40 teams in the event at UNH. They placed 6th out of the 40 teams at the Reading Event earlier this year. They steadily moved up their New England ranking due to the success this season. They were extremely pleased with the outcome and improvements made this season and are looking forward to next year with planning for fundraising, underclass team training, and offseason events. The key club just returned from the district convention in Springfield, Massachusetts. Eight students attended and were able to network with other key club students from all over New England. They learned about building stronger teams and explored new ideas about fundraising and community service. They plan on using this information to better help the club for next year. This month, the club will be cleaning up and planting the flower area by the flagpole to get it ready for Memorial Day and senior activities, and they'll be volunteering by giving tours during freshman orientation and sponsoring a blood drive after vacation.
Great report. Yes.
I'd just like to ask, that's a great report, thank you. Do any of your fellow students ever ask you what goes on at a school committee meeting, or what we do here, or anything like that? Or bring any concerns to you, ever?
Not really.
No?
Not much of a concern to us. Most people.
Yeah, I was just wondering. Because I think when I first got on the board, we had a student rep who did bring, occasionally would bring concerns, you know, the kids wanted to know what was going on. I was wondering if that ever happened, and feel free to do it.
I haven't heard any concerns out this year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Question for Saffron.
It's true.
I just wanted, you're a senior, right? Would you mind, could you possibly, when you get your yearbook, bring it in so we can see what it looks like?
Sure, yeah, definitely.
I'm just really curious to know. That'd be great, if you can.
Yeah.
We can sign it.
Alright, perfect.
That's a good.
Sure she can't wait for that. Well, thank you again. Can I move on? Is Mr. Palmer here tonight?
No, but I can take care of him.
You can? Okay. We have the USA Skills Medal winners tonight.
Personal.
Okay, these are our Skills USA winners, and this is Megan Riley. Ridley, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. She is on the E-Board representing Skills. Introduce yourself.
My name's Kalen Collins. I'm also on the E-Board, and I'm silver at the district's competition.
And I'm Kyle Ridley. I won a silver at the district's competition as well.
So, they are going off to the states, and it's in Marlborough, Mass. on April 30th, Saturday at 9:45 a.m. And also, if you like, it's going to be streamed live on, I believe it's MassSkillUSA.TV. So, if you want to see it live. And again, tremendous talent, great kids. I've never seen it in my office. Tell them where you're from.
I'm from Methuen, Mass., and I'm a senior in carpentry.
I'm from Golden Death, and I'm a senior in carpentry.
I'm from Methuen, and I'm also a senior in carpentry.
What does E-Board stand for?
The Executive Board.
Executive, of the?
Of the Skills. The Skills Executive Board is what you're saying.
Excellent.
Oh, excellent.
So, tell me again what that website is.
Okay, it's.
Is it April 30th, you said?
Yes, it's April 30th, Saturday at 9:45, and it's going to be streamed live.
Oh, M.A.
Wait a minute.
Yep.
Skill.
M.A. Skills.
SkillsUSA.
USA.
Dot TV.
Dot TV.
It'll be streamed live. So, our lovely Whittier students will be famous.
We'll have a press release.
I know. We'll be asking for your autographs.
Yes.
Great job.
Thank you.
Is that the Marriott?
Yeah, the time, 9:45.
A.M.
A.M., correct.
I believe it's at the Marriott in Marlborough. And that'll be streaming the award ceremony. It won't be streaming, like, I'll be building a cabinet the day before, so you won't be able to see that, but you'll be seeing, like, who wins what. I know, it's.
Oh!
If you want to see, like, all the team builds and stuff, you just come down to Marriott, and they got a big tent outside, and then you just walk in there, and you'll get to see everything.
Well, you could bring it next time. Bring it to our May meeting.
Who is it made of?
Um, I don't know yet. I haven't got the blueprints. I get them that day.
Oh!
We're very proud of you guys.
Yes. Congratulations.
Yes, Ms. Lynch.
If anyone's ever been to a SkillsUSA competition, they're phenomenal, and they're exciting, and there's such a great atmosphere of kids competing against each other, showing their work in their trade. I have to congratulate this year's group. I think it's the most medal winners we've ever had. I think we had maybe 60 gold, silver, and bronze total, and that truly is the best we've ever done. So, you know, congratulations. I will see you in Marlborough that week, because it really is a very exciting competition, and it's really.
Thank you, you're going.
Yeah, so, yeah, I love it.
So, it's not just the day, how many days will you be there?
Three.
Three.
Thursday, Friday, and Sunday.
And you don't do anything until you get there? Is that it?
So, as soon as we get there on Thursday, we'll go to our rooms, dump off our stuff, and then we'll head down to the conference rooms. They break all the down-the-walls, and all the schools come in, and they'll have the opening ceremony. And then we'll go to our briefing rooms. We'll figure out what we're doing the next day. Then come the next day, we go to our competitions. We build, or we display what we've done, and then the following day, the awards ceremony.
It's exciting. That's wonderful.
So, how many schools are?
Quite a few.
Schools for the entire state.
Yeah, so, 26 vocational schools plus the comprehensive high schools that have vocational programs.
And if I may ask, what, they have to, you have to build, say, a cabinet. What do you do for cosmetology?
I'm not going as, I'm going as a voting delegate. I'll be voting on the presentations.
Oh! Wow, that's quite an honor.
You're a judge.
Yeah, that's great.
How long are you doing that?
I'm not going.
Oh, you're not going?
Yeah. So, only gold medalists go for teamwork, and three silver medalists from all of our districts, our districts, three of the silver medalists had the chance of going, and unfortunately didn't choose our silver medalist team.
Well, that's alright.
First time going for skills and you medalists. Pretty good.
That's pretty good, exactly. Exactly, nothing to sneeze at, yeah.
Well, here they are, great job.
Great job.
Good luck! Good luck!
Thank you. Moving on to reports and communications, we now have the superintendent's report, Ms. Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight, for informational purposes, I have personnel action, of a security monitor, working fora, the 2015-2016 Spring Musical, freshman orientation, spring coaches, and then the resignation of an instructor.
One question?
Yes.
The working fora is a current employee?
Yes.
Who's being given a stipend to perform supervisory duties?
Yep.
Thank you.
Budget update, well, I think we all know what happened tonight. MCAS update, the Biology MCAS results are in. 24 students that took the Biology MCAS retest in February. 16 of those students passed. There are eight students in the class of 2017 that still need to pass the Biology MCAS and will do so in June with the sophomores. The Grade 10 MCAS after-school program began on April 11th and runs now through Monday, May 16th. This program is offered to all Grade 10 students. On Thursday, March 10th, I attended the MAVA Board of Directors. MAVA is the Massachusetts Association of Vocational Administrators. Meeting in Marlborough, discussion included the governor's initiative to increase access to vocational ed. On Friday, March 11th, I attended a meeting at Essex Tech on charter schools. Representative Lenny Mara was in attendance, and I was able to discuss the current school funding issues with him along with other local superintendents. On Monday, March 14th, I attended the Georgetown Town Meeting, the Selectment of Clarification on the Stabilization Account. I want to thank Kara Cosmas, our business manager, and Amy Poxick, our treasurer, for attending that meeting with me. On Tuesday, March 14th, I attended the Salisbury Chamber of Commerce meeting with Patricia Lowell, our Student Services Coordinator. At that meeting, Representative James Calcorce and Senator Kenny O'Connor eyes were in attendance. This was a wonderful opportunity to meet with local legislators in an informal session, in an informal setting. On Wednesday, March 16th, I attended the Superintendent Mentor Meeting in Marlborough. I have two more sessions to complete that program. On Tuesday, March 29th, I met with my mentor, Joan Conley. On Thursday, March 31st, I hosted the FY17 budget meetings. In attendance at this meeting was Karen Snow and Neil Harrington from Salisbury, Amy Lydon from Raleigh, James Lynch from Amesbury, Michael Bertino from West Newberry. On Wednesday, April 6th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Business Expo with Beverly DeSalvo, our Vocational Coordinator, and Dave Cunningham, our Night School Coordinator. On Thursday, April 7th, I hosted the FY17 budget meetings. In attendance was Carol McLeod from Merrimack, Mike Farrell from Georgetown, Chuck Benevento from Haverhill, and Stephanie Frontiera and Robin Crosby from Ipswich. On Monday, April 11th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting. They recently asked me to become a member of that board.
Did you accept?
I did. That's why I attended the meeting. Establishment of scholarships. According to school committee policy, I need to get acceptance from the school committee. Eastern Bank Charitable Foundation is donating $2,000 scholarship to support students of the class of 2016. I'd like to thank that Laura Kurzor, Executive Director of Eastern Bank, for this general scholarship. I respectfully request the school committee to accept this scholarship.
I move to accept the scholars, the very generous scholarship from Eastern Bank.
Motion by Ms. Gilbert, second by Ms. Lozage. Any more comments on the scholarship? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you. Tonight, I also, I'm looking for the recommendation for the school committee to vote to authorize me to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest. We're submitting the statement of interest, and it requires a vote of the school committee. At this time, I need a motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
I just need a clarification.
Clarification.
I've been reading this statement of interest dated April 7th.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we have a copy of that?
We do. Kara, do you have a copy of that? Yeah.
I understand the process, and that you need to reapply since we didn't get it last July.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure we had a motion that was coherent. We do need the motion, so.
Oh, I thought we did.
There was a motion.
Need a motion.
I need a motion.
Yeah, and I seconded, yeah.
And I was discussing it.
Right, but do you have that April 7th memo that you asked them about? I'm just looking for clarification. Oh, you just want to make sure we have it?
It's a statement, yeah.
Okay, okay, good. Any other comments on that?
One question.
Yes, Ms. Gilbert.
Is it exactly the same application as we did the first time? Did you tweak anything?
We definitely tweaked it.
Okay.
We changed things. Basically, we've done some work, and there's been other issues that have presented themselves. So, we have added and subtracted based on that. And also based on, we've done a lot of workshops, and the MSBA has told us what they're looking for, what we need to prove and show. So, that's what, you know, I have to hand it, Ms. Cosmas has really done a great job handling that statement of interest, so.
Just hoping we had done that, good.
Yes, Ms. True.
I just wanted to ask if we could have an update. I was on the building committee a while ago, and I just wondered if there could be, at some point during the next three months, some kind of an update on how, what the changes were, if there were many or just a few.
Sure.
I'm not sure. If there were just a few?
Sure.
That might be fine. If there were lots, then maybe a meeting might be necessary.
Yeah, it would be helpful to, you know, do that, as well as let you know what, you know, we're looking to do for the summer, so our summer project list, so we can certainly do that.
Chris, go ahead.
I haven't been in the process, so I don't know, but is the anticipation for a renovation versus a new project, number one? And I know that the MAS, they control the building process, but rough budget you're looking for based on the projects, and then if you've got a general timeframe schedule?
It's very general. As you know, MSBA does control the funding. They look at the buildings, so it would really come from a feasibility study. We're looking for a renovation, not a new building. The concern is that we can't really change the footprint because this is a lot of swampland, but we definitely need, you know, you get behind the walls here a little bit, and we have some concerns, and those are some of the things that we're looking to do.
Overall magnitude, I mean, 10 million, 80 million?
I would say more than 50 million.
Okay, thank you.
I think that this building, I think, call me if I'm wrong, was built in 1974?
One.
Seventy-one?
Forty-seven years old.
Forty-seven years old, and it's been maintained, in my estimation, very well. However, the infrastructure, you know, as she said, you know, the wiring, you know, the plumbing, all those things, you know, are still 40 years old, and they're starting to fail. We did, we did go into a aggressive program, I guess, on an air conditioning system, but, you know, it's just more of a stop-cap situation, so. We, over a year ago, we approved to go into an engineering study. Maybe you should get one of those reports from the engineering study?
Certainly.
Yeah, which has outlined what they recommended. One of the things in the interim which came up is that the football field, the bleachers, are just about ready to be condemned, and so, to maintain that, that's why this year we're going to take money from the capital assessment and from the E&amp;D account and put in all-new bleachers. Of course, since we're going to replace them, we have to bring them all up to ADA standards, and, you know, it's a whole thing, so that's one of the issues. Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you my assessment on the building, the engineering plan that we had a year or so ago. The amount was staggering when we heard it, because it seemed like they just wanted to bulldoze the whole school and build a whole new facility. So, there is a lot of work ahead for us to decide what we want to do, what we can put off, what we choose not to do, as far as the building, you know, renovation goes. So, we're really in the beginning process of the, of trying to maintain the building and keep it up. So, yeah, and I think having a copy of that engineering study would be good.
Yes.
One quick question for Maureen. What is our reimbursement rate?
It depends on each community. Kara can tell you a little bit.
Oh, it does go by each community?
Kara, you want to? Every school district has a different reimbursement rate, and it's based on the communities themselves. I had originally thought that our reimbursement rate would be more similar to that of Haverhill because we are 75% comprised, but I looked at the rates recently, and it's in the mid-50s, I believe, right now. But I do believe that that is under study, because there have been some concerns about the fact that the rates for the regional schools are significantly lower than some of their member communities. But right now, I think it's about 57. I don't know where it would be when we finally get into the pipeline. It could be higher, hopefully higher. And a lot of it's based on your free and reduced status and the wealth of your communities.
It used to be a lot higher, didn't it? Didn't it used to be more like 75%?
I think it was higher. I think it was in the 60s when we did the roof, so I don't know why it's lower, because from what I can see, the communities around us seem to be going higher. So, I'm confused as to why the rate was where it was.
We'll get you that report. So, we vote on that yet?
Nope.
So, any other comments on this statement of interest? None being heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Now, move on, under the superintendent's report, to the admissions update, Ms. Lowell. Let's get our own title.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and Superintendent Lynch. In your packet, you have received the district's admission update effective April 1st, April 6th, actually, this year. I also included a summary comparison of the admission data compared to last year for your information, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Tucker?
Same question that I ask quite a bit, of the quality of students that we're getting from our ascending districts are improving, or doing the same, or?
I think our outreach to the communities has helped in helping students and staff understand the admissions process and how the rubric works and the scoring, and that helps kids understand that attendance and, you know, being a good student is all possible.
Because I remember when MCAS first came out, and we were receiving in ninth-grade students with maybe less than ninth-grade, you know, reading and math scores, and I'm wondering if the students that are receiving in the ninth grade are, you know, up into eighth, ninth-grade level reading and math?
I think we still have our challenges, just like every school, you know, because we don't, there's no assessment prior to admission. So, you know, as long as students are going to school and, you know, showing an interest in vocational ed and are pursuing, you know, getting good grades and, you know, showing readiness for vocational education, they're coming, and then we do all our assessment afterwards. So, you know, students are still coming in who show needs within reading and math, and we have our programs to support them, and have great success with them.
Just wanted to follow up. Do you find that the grading across our ascending communities are comparable?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Galena?
Yeah. Yeah, I was reviewing these numbers earlier, and that brings up a question, I guess. I'm looking at some of these numbers in the towns, and you might have two or three from this town, or four from that town, and some of these towns are higher. So, the last question about the grading being comparable from the communities. I'm trying to figure out how that would actually apply to that, because, you know.
Well, I think, I think one thing.
I don't want to point out communities, but some of these communities are, you know, a third of their applicants are being denied, and some of these communities, less than 2% or 3% are being denied.
Yeah, I think that's where it's really good to look over the years, because there are, you know, there are fluctuations year to year, you know, and I definitely looked at that initially, putting this chart together. So, that if you, just even looking at last year compared to this year, the percentage for, let's say, you know, I'll just use Amesbury because they're at the top of the list. Last year, they had 46 applications, and only 28 were accepted, but this year, we received 31, and 22 were accepted, so it had a, they had a higher percentage rate this year. And every community kind of shows those fluctuations, because each group is a little bit different. As far as the applications received from each town, they're pretty consistent with the enrollment. I always look at the eighth-grade enrollment numbers from October 1, so I can see how many I should anticipate from each town, and they're pretty consistent from year to year of how many each student, because year to year, say, a community like Amesbury or Haverhill, their eighth-grade enrollments may go up or down by 40 or 50 students. So, I always kind of look at, well, how many should I be receiving approximately each year? Because the percentages tend to be pretty consistent, but sometimes there's a class that really drops off or just goes off the chart. I think Groveland in the past was a community that had a huge increase all of a sudden, and now they've kind of leveled off again, so there's always going to be a little bit of that roller coaster, maybe with one or two communities a year, but overall, it's pretty consistent. As you can see, 513 compared to 546 of last year. And the enrollment, and when I looked at the whole count for all the communities for eighth grade, it was almost the same. I think there was a 20-student difference. So, I said, well, that's pretty consistent, then.
The, I think what I'd be looking more for is that, and I understand that, like, this year we started with 513 students, and we can only accept that this year we accepted 412. So, there's definitely a percentage that has to be reduced, but I'd be looking to see it more evenly distributed through the communities, not.
I think they are just evenly.
I disagree. And a reason why I'm saying that, if you look at these numbers, some of these numbers, a third of the applicants have been denied.
Yeah, I think, I hear what you're saying. I think that we have anywhere from, I think the lowest was 62% for one community, up to 100% for another community.
Right.
And the scoring rubric is a 67. So, just statistically speaking, I always want to see at least in that high 60% range or higher because, given that all students are coming from a general same background of education, that they should fall into that statistical measure. But, again, every group, and we, we see it every year, I think I was saying to one of the committee members earlier, they always have their own personality year to year that you see coming in.
Well, I know some of the community members, the school committee members from the communities don't appreciate me bringing this up.
No, no, you have the right.
I certainly don't have anything to complain about for my community because I have the highest accepted rating for the amount of people in my community. But, I'm here to represent every student in this district, and I'm trying to represent the students from your town, and your town, and your town, and your town. And I'm not here to make friends. I'm here to represent those kids, and I would like this looked at. That's what, that's the point I'm making. And I'll say no more about it tonight. Thank you.
No, no, I think you have the right. Maureen?
You know, I just, the admissions is always kind of a, as a former admissions counselor that took care of this, it's, it's very, it's a very tough decision. And it's, we use the rubric. It is very objective. We don't look at the rubric differently if a student was from Newberry Court versus a student from Haverhill. Everyone gets the same shot. We don't look at whether a student is a special education student or not. Those aren't things that we look at. Everyone, their applications come in at the same rate, we, we rate them the same. The one great thing that I can say is that if a student wants a vocational education, the door is open for them. So, if they do not get accepted at this part of the year, we will again look at their application in June. So, they finish the school year...
I absolutely understand that, and I've worked with you...
Yeah.
...to bring in students...
Right.
...with those situations. I appreciate that.
And then...
Absolutely appreciate that. Second chance.
There's more than two chances. Then in January, again, so, you know, for instance, in Haverhill, I, I heard a little bit about kids not getting accepted from Haverhill and whatnot. So, I, I went back and I looked at the data, and the data said, for those students that were not accepted last year, only two of those students applied in January, and those two students were accepted. So, if a student truly wants a vocational education, the guidance counselors here, the guidance counselors at the ascending districts, I have to say, the ascending district guidance counselors are phenomenal and will work very hard with us. If a student truly wants a vocational education, we will get them that vocational education.
What raised my concern was, the question was asked of the students who are applying, are they equal across the board?
Mm-hmm.
And the answer was, yes, they are. That alone drove my question.
Right.
Percentage-wise, some of these don't stand.
Right.
That's all an ass.
Right. And I think that there's a certain, each community treats Whittier Tech differently as well.
Okay, understood, understood.
Okay.
Like I said, Groveland has nothing to complain about.
Right.
We've come a long way, but I just want, I want to see this to be fair throughout.
Yes.
Well, I have...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I have two comments. Number one is, this is the second year that we've had all-in district.
Mm-hmm.
If you notice, oh, there's no choice.
Absolutely.
So, every, and that tells me that every student that wanted to go, come to Whittier, that applied, that made the criteria, was not turned away.
Yes.
And as Maureen mentioned, those that, I think we send out a formal letter stating to each student that doesn't make it what he or she has to do.
Yes.
You know, whether it's grades or attendance or whatever. But, I think if we did some data, maybe we should do this. I think the acceptance percentages over the last five years has been steadily increasing.
Um, I...
Because when I look at these figures here, like, for instance, you, you take a look at Haverhill, they have the same number of applicants, but they had 20 more students make the requirements. And I think, you know, years ago, I'm not saying years ago, but in the last four or five years, I think the amount that applied was a higher number and less made it. So, I think now, you know, I, I always didn't like the fact that people say, schools move slow, you know? You put in a new program, it's not like business. You, you want to see results in the next quarter.
Right.
Profit or loss. But with schools, it takes four to five, six years for a program to mature and get working. So, I think if you, if we do that, it might be a good exercise for the business manager. Not really, who would do that?
Well, I can, I can confidently tell you that I know that it's moved from 70 to 80%.
Is to go through the last five years, where, last five years, look at the amount of applicants and the percent that were accepted. Because now, I think...
This year, this year, we're at 80%.
Yeah.
And I can tell you that about five years ago, we were around 70%.
Right. But it might be nice to see a chart of that. Because I think now, students are being, I wouldn't say more qualified, but the desire is higher to go and therefore, they're conforming. Because if you look at the five criterias, and I won't belabor this anymore, but three of them, by the time you get to the ninth grade, they're already in stone, you know? Attendance, discipline, you know, and grades, you know? Those are already cast in stone, you can't change, or you can, you know? So, but those students are now seeing earlier, you know, and I have students, parents that I see once in a while, say, my, my son's in the sixth grade, he's always talking about Whittier. Well, make sure that they go to school and we don't want unexcused absences, you know? We don't want being suspended because you can't erase those things, you know?
Right.
So, I think maybe that'll be nice so we can see the trend and, you know, I hear Mr. Galena. We'll just go to Mr. Early and then we'll move on.
Funny, it's funny, this is an important chart. You know, you hit a couple of good questions here. I've been following this for a long time myself. Haverhill, Haverhill does have a higher percentage, but it also has a lot of, a lot more applicants. However, I did see that we only have 412 students this year versus last year, 415. Do you know roughly offhand, of that 412, 415, how many showed up in September?
Uh, 346. I'm gonna say off the top of my head.
They're still at 15, 20% that doesn't show up.
Right, you can accept them and they don't, no, it's wrong.
And it's not fair, it's not fair to the other kids that didn't get accepted. However, the, the kids that didn't get accepted, if they try from April 1st to the end of the year, and it was very disappointing in January when I asked the superintendent how many applied, not many. So, you know, 100 kids didn't get accepted, or 120, whatever it is, and only, I think, 15 or 20 applied in January. So, you know, you can't blame Whittier for this. You can't blame the ascending communities, just nobody has the answer for that.
It's a kid.
And I want to commend the staff, but also, I want to commend all the ascending communities that are doing a, a great job. They really are. And the good part about it is, kids that did get accepted earned it, and I want to commend them. Thank you.
Thank you.
One, can I just add one closing statement?
All right, then we're gonna move on.
All right. I feel it is my responsibility on this Whittier School Committee to look after the interests of the 1,300 students that were accepted to go here, and we run a good school, we run good programs. I'm not trying to run Georgetown, or Penticottet, or Amesbury. I'm trying to run Whittier, Votek, and the 1,300 students that are properly accepted and go here.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lowell.
That's our mission.
Great job.
Thanks, Patty.
Now go on to the principal report, Mr. Leganes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and rest of the school committee members. A few things. As of last week, we have 342 students playing spring sports. We actually have a, there was a ballgame going on as we came in today.
Tonight, yeah.
I, I couldn't see the score, it was 4-3, the other team, right now, so who knows where they're at. But, you know, it was a little difficult start, the first, you know, the weather didn't really cooperate as usual, not like last year. I think we had a few feet of snow, maybe. But they are starting the games and they will go through the spring break as well. The fields seem to be holding up. I know Harry's had a little bit of issues, but they're holding up and we're on our way. Hopefully, knock on wood, we're not going to get any more snow. Freshman orientation, a couple of important dates of freshman orientation, if you can believe it, we're scheduled now for May 14th, and the, our awards night is going to be May 25th. The mock crash, so we have during the week, our senior activities. It starts off, we have the mock, mock crash, May 26th. We also have our senior talent show that the seniors have a blast, comes seventh, eighth period, and they have their talent show here. That is going to be on the 27th, I'm sorry, the, the 27th, yes. And then on May 31st, is the day after our vacation, Memorial Vacation, we have the senior prom, and then graduation is June 2nd. So, it's that time of year that things are just rolling really quickly. Last week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, we had assemblies for the seniors, and in those assemblies, the class advisors, senior class advisors, Mr. Pigeon and myself met with the senior class to review expectations, discipline, and these type of events that are coming up very soon. As of right now, the last day of school is June 20th for the students. Also, if you didn't get the chance, and we saw the talented, our Whittier students, the talented skills children, if you didn't get the chance, the Furniture Trust Eco Carpentry Challenge, and the display is actually in our, in our lobby area right now, and I'll tell you just a little bit about that. Last year, the Carpentry students, Mr. Mark Whittier, his sophomores, they placed first at this challenge at District Hall in Boston. They entered the contest last year and won. This year, the Carpentry students, his sophomores again, new sophomores, used their carpentry skills to develop chairs, mugs, cornhole game, and horseshoes, and other types of fun things that are going on. And the theme of their display was, When Life Gives You Lemons. So, I just want to read you just a little bit about the, the challenge, and those of you who are not familiar, basically, it's, it's scrap office furniture and whatever's in the office that really is going to go out to scrap. And they, they have the weight and everybody, every one of the contestants, they drop it off, then they have to create these beautiful things. Last year, I think they had like a golf theme and an in-office golf theme. So, this year, if anybody's interested, the date is Thursday, April 28th, and it's from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and that's in District Hall in 75 Northern Avenue in Boston, Mass. So, here it says, increasingly successful. Every year, the Eco Carpentry Challenge promotes resourcefulness in recycling and provides an opportunity for students to develop their creative carpentry skills while demonstrating their commitment to recycling by creating new products from used furniture, office furniture. So, it's pretty amazing, pretty amazing event. And I asked Mark Whittier, the Carpentry sophomore, Carpentry teacher, I said, there's no way that Whittier Tech's gonna lose, we have to win. He says, that's the problem, these kids are too good, and they're gonna show up with this. So, if you get a chance, please go down there, maybe on the way out, and check it out. It's pretty amazing. And I think Superintendent Lynch has claims for a couple of the chairs there, and man, no, just kidding, but it's, it's absolutely beautiful. Any questions or anything I could answer? Yes?
Will they be on display at the ad board dinner like they were last year?
Yeah, I, I, I think he, yeah, definitely. He will, you know, I, you know, we had, too bad we didn't display it here tonight.
I know.
It would have been a good idea, maybe next year. But yes, yes, we'll have the display.
They will be there?
Yes, we'll make sure.
You know what, we just looked, it's the same night, so it won't be on display.
Oh, it's the same night. I'm sorry.
I thought that date sounded familiar.
Take pictures.
Yeah.
Go down.
If you get a chance, it's right, it's right down the hallway. And just be amazed at what, what they've done, just absolutely amazing.
Well, I was very impressed last year. Very impressed.
Awesome.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good report. Next on the agenda, under the business manager, Ms. Cosmos, and the long-anticipated variance analysis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. As Mr. Leganes said, the year is flying by, and when I was preparing the variance report for tonight's meeting, I realized that nine months or three-quarters of the year have passed, and I thought, wow, we're almost done. So, as in the past, your report shows two different colors. The lines in green are overages that can be used to apply any of the lines that are in yellow, which represent shortages in some of the accounts. Basically, overall, the district is on track and, and good shape financially, but I, you know, I know that there's probably a lot of questions that say, why are some accounts over and why are some accounts under? And, and, and the real, there's a couple of realities here. One is, budget fluctuations happen because budgets are prepared sometimes more than a year in advance as to when you're actually going to spend the funds. You don't know who's going to leave the district, you don't know who's going to retire, you don't even know what students are going to be coming in and what vocational areas they're going to want to get involved in. So, things like student enrollment and staffing, you don't know what maintenance necessities will be needed, and of course, when we're talking about a 43-year-old building, there are things that crop up that we can't passively plan on, and we never really know what the utility costs will be. Last year, we had a really bad cold winter with a lot of snow, this year, we didn't. So, I just wanted to explain, that's why you do see budget fluctuations, and as usual, I will try to explain any of the things that concern you or you have questions about. But also, at the end of the year, as you know, we balance the accounts out. You know, there are some things that have overages, some things that have underages, and if we think we're going to have money left at the end of the year, we typically come to you with a spending plan and we talk to you about that. So, I present the variance report, and I welcome any questions.
Big question, Mr. Early?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
I don't want to pick this apart. We have a couple of budgets with zero budgets and they're negative. Why were they zero?
I think sometimes when people go in, it's the accounts that they're assigned, and some of them are old accounts, and I think they just pull up the old account that may have been changed. I was talking to Mrs. Tru about that. I think sometimes people grab the wrong accounts, and we don't realize till the thing has been spent and we look at the report, that maybe they used an account and we should have them use a different account where the funds are.
I'm just looking at graphics.
Mm-hmm. Oh, graphics, graphics was an account that was in choice. Most of the graphics supplies were in choice last year. So, some of those zero accounts are choice funds.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I didn't pick it apart.
Excuse me. Now move on to the chairperson's report under the April annual agenda writing, which is tonight. We, as of Monday night, we did the reorganization of the committee. You all have in your packets the annual agenda list for the year, and also, the current members on the various subcommittees. We did the review of the committee goals, and we just went through the various variance analysis. For our next meeting in May, we'll have the appointment of the subcommittee.
Right.
You have the current members that are on the committees now. If you would like to change the subcommittee, please let myself or Lisa know so I can try to accommodate that. And I know Chris is a new member, if he sees a committee there, he would like to join. I'm sure we can accommodate that. I, I like to have all the members at least be in one committee so that you can get, you know, a smaller type of committee group handling situations. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The review of the school committee goals, where, did we not get those?
I think we did those.
We did the evaluation, self-evaluation. Did we do the goals?
Your goals follow the school improvement and strategic plan.
Okay. So, that's just all the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll have the new fiscal 2017 school calendar, which we have to approve, and the superintendent's evaluation. And he said, I added a D here, I don't know if we want to make this, because I think is next meeting, her last meeting? Right?
From May to the June.
You'll be at the May meeting. She'll be at the June, she'll be at, right, so I think we should put that on. We usually, you usually, they bring the new representative introduced to the school committee, so we can add that on for... committee, so we can add that on for, you know, agenda item. Okay. Subcommittee reports. The executive committee, we have not met. Do we have a need in the near future?
Nope.
Oh. Destructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde's not here, but I think play that by ear. Plan operations, Mr. Tucker.
As far as plan operations, I was gonna ask Ms. Tru's concern about the, well, earlier you mentioned the building of the bleachers and the building project, and what's going on with that. With the superintendent's request, we could have a plant operations, maybe next month, you can tell us if we would need one...
Sure.
Yeah.
To discuss the bleachers, because I don't think we're gonna be hiring a plant, what do you, what do you call when you have a supervisor?
Project manager?
Yeah, we're not gonna have a project manager for the bleachers, I don't believe.
I think Harry will see that.
We're getting engineers right now, so, you know, I'll be able to fill you in more about that.
So, maybe next month, we'll schedule a plant operations meeting.
Okay, great.
To discuss that.
Salary negotiations?
I do need to negotiate business manager's contract.
Okay, so...
So, we can either do it in May or June.
Well, we should do it sooner than later, so I would get together with Mr. Nelson and check with the other members to see when you can meet.
6:30 before the next month?
You just talked about plan operations, then?
Yeah.
No, no, no. Plan operations, all the superintendent's gonna do is come back with what we can talk about.
Oh, you're not gonna have a meeting?
No, not gonna have a meeting.
I think usually salary meets on an off week from the school committee at night, because they have to discuss, that individual has to come, they go over the salary. Okay. Policy, Mr. Irving.
Mr. Chairman, we will need a meeting. I believe we have four or five pending policies, so I'd like to call a meeting for May 11th.
May 11th.
6:30 p.m.
11.
If that's convenient for the others, just to get a little earlier.
Okeydoke. Thank you. The next regular school committee meeting will be on May the 11th, and we approved at Monday night, right here at 7:00 p.m. Is there any new business members would like to discuss down the road? Mr. Early?
Recently, we had a family member come down, and it was their 90th birthday, and I want to commend the poets in, singing happy birthday for him. He was 90 years old, and they went out of their way and sang happy birthday, and I want to commend them.
Thank you, I'll make sure to pass that message on to them.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Okay, we do have a need tonight for an executive session.
Can I say something in new business, please?
Oh, sure, definitely.
I just wanted to comment, Joanna and I both went to the NSBA conference.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And it was great. The biggest problem was there was too much, they offered too much, and you just couldn't be everywhere. But if anybody ever gets a chance to go to these conferences, and I had a nice conversation with Scott Wood the other night, he was there, and it was, it was a great, he was very impressed, because he's never, he's said 13 years on a board, and he's never been to either the local one, the MASC, or the national. So, it's, they're good conferences, you, you always come away learning something. That's it?
That's true.
Just before you adjourn, I just wanted to ask, how are we conducting the superintendent's evaluation? Is that something that comes to us in May, at the May meeting, and then we take it with us, I seem to remember?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, it's a questionnaire.
Thanks, I just wanted to say...
I think it's five categories, five or six?
There's four standards in the goals.
Yeah. Forty-seven, yeah. Okay. Before we adjourn, I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. Upon completion of executive session, we will adjourn. So, move.
Second.
Second. Vote, call vote.
No.
No. Mr. Galena?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Galena.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
That's true. Mr. LaSage?
Yep.
We'll take a quick five-minute recess.
I know you did.
Huh? Hey, Mr. Gass, did you stay?
I don't believe in them a lot.
Okay.